Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, November 5th. We are at the Norfolk Board of Selectmen meeting in room 124. I'm the chairman of the board, Rob Garrity. To my right is Scott Bugby, our vice chair. To my left is Jim Leahan, our clerk. We're joined by Jack Hathaway, town administrator, and Marion Harrington, our able executive assistant. I must advise you all that this meeting is being video and audio taped. And trust me, a lot of people do watch it, so watch what you say. It's a lesson I have to learn every week, it seems.
And you're not good at it.
Not good at it. Mr. Hathaway, would you favor us with the agenda?
Be happy to. To start off, the first order of business, we have a special presentation with Rolling Thunder of Massachusetts, Chapter 1, and followed by the Town Administrator Report, including action items, a proven amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with Rentham, providing water to Norfolk residents, consider approving contractor drive, contract drivers and labor rates for snow for the DPW, approving the Norfolk Lions Club Santa Parade for December 8th, 2013, conservation endorsement for 17 Standish Road, and consider appointing Todd Lindmark to the Recreation Commission. I understand he's a financial wizard. Discussion items of the Fall
You're baiting me.
Fall Town Meeting.
Don't get him going.
You're really, really baiting me.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have Chip Fagan, friend of the Rolling Thunder, who I think you may be interested in calling up to the table.
Mr. Fagan, would you come up, please?
Thanks very much.
Is the green light on, Chip?
Thanks very much. I want to introduce you to Joe Detromont. Joe's the president of Rolling Thunder in Mass, Chapter 1.
Welcome, Joe.
Darren Bean is a neighbor of mine, and he helped get the, everything together for this. Like to thank you gentlemen for your commitment to the memorial chair. This is great. Like to thank the Millsham Vets for donating the flags for the memorial. Since World War I, more than 92,000 service members are unaccounted for. This unoccupied seat is dedicated to the memory of those brave men and women, and to the sacrifices each made in serving this country. This is dedicated by Rolling Thunder in Mass, Chapter 1, and the town of Norfolk. God bless you. God bless America. 2013. I always like to think that we're really blessed in this country to have young men and women who are willing to make the ultimate, to write that blank check and make the ultimate sacrifice for us, and go over, whether it be in a peacekeeping mission or something else. So, I think we're very blessed to have those people, and we can't do enough for them, and we need to treat them all right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chip. Myself also. I'd like to thank you all for getting this done. Darren got it done next door, and after doing that, Chip said, hey, why not get one right next door? And we're hoping that this will continue right on through Massachusetts. That's our ultimate goal. Our first goal was to get them done in our professional sports stadiums. We did that, so now we figured, why not all the cities and towns in Massachusetts? So, I'm hoping that all of the members from Norfolk will come down to Town Hall. Is it going to be placed in here permanently?
Yes, Jack.
Okay. All right. It is something, too, that you can bring around to schools and different organizations, and I know that you guys had planned to do that. But it's a great way. It's all about education, this particular chair. People don't realize it, but there are over 91,000 missing soldiers since World War I. So, it's something that we need to educate the members of Norfolk and the school children of Norfolk, but also right across this country. And we just started a program down in Washington that we're going to try to get this right across the country. So, I invite everyone in the town of Norfolk to come down and check this out. Bring your kids down and show them, and just let them know that there are a lot of families out there that still, to this day, don't know where their loved ones are, and it's something that we should really never forget. So, once again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leahan.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Don't go away. I want to thank you guys very much for bringing this to our attention and for helping us make this happen, and I really want to thank you for all you do. You guys are tremendous.
Well, it's a team effort, and, you know, this is something that...
And ladies, I don't mean to be...
Oh, no, they understand.
No, but it doesn't matter. It's principle here.
That's right. That's right. But, no, we appreciate it. And again, too, this is something that Chip did on his own, and we're just happy to assist him in this. And it's what we hope will happen right across this country. It's hard for us to be everywhere in every state, and we do have 95 chapters across the U.S., but we're, we just introduced this program to the other chapters, so we're hoping that they'll be as successful as we are. We've dedicated probably over 45 chairs so far, just here in the Commonwealth, and we're hoping to just get right to the whole 351. But it's people like Chip that we need, and anyone that has a Town Hall that might not have one. I know you're from, or you have something to do with the Newton area.
I work in Newton Town Hall, and they have one in State Hall?
Yep. We, Rolling Thunder, dedicated one of those with Setti, Mayor Setti, over there, Setti Warren, and that was quite an event.
They see the parents come in, their kids stop, and they read the plaque, so...
Yeah. That's exactly what it's, what it's all about. And again, I'm addressing the people at home. Come on down sometime during this week. This is Veterans Day, so it's a perfect time to get down here, perfect time to bring them down here and show them this, you know? So, you know, we applaud you guys for letting us do this here in town.
Thank you very much.
Well, I want you to know, Joe, that we have an annual Veterans Day assembly in our schools, and I've been, it's one of my great honors to have an opportunity to go over and talk to the kids on that day.
That's awesome.
And that is this Thursday morning. I'm bringing that chair.
That's great. That's great.
And we're going to tell the story.
Excellent. All right.
So, I thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much.
And before you guys leave, I've asked the chairman, and he's agreed, that if you would join us, we'd just all like to stand in a moment of silence in respect to that.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. You guys are great. We did the easy thing. You guys do other good work.
It's a pleasure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's important.
Well, it's important what you're doing.
Yeah. Ours is easy part. Saying yes is easy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome.
It's great to see those folks.
Yeah. It should be no-brainer in every town. I understand what MMA, I mean, why wouldn't you do it?
Why wouldn't you do it, right?
You know, I mean, it's like, that's a nice picture.
Stay there, Chip.
Yeah, that'd be a good picture.
You still on TV?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You are.
I'm going for two nights.
You're gonna go two nights?
Friday, Saturday.
I've never done that.
See the flag?
I haven't booked my hotel yet, so maybe... I gave my stuff to Marion. Yeah. Well, no, we book it, because you have to give a credit card for your hotel.
No, maybe.
You can't book the hotel.
No, Marion didn't book the hotel.
Marion, you don't book the hotel, like, for MMA, right?
Chip, now if you could only learn how to skate, things are really going to be good.
He's like, Marion, do that. I'm like, no. She's not putting her credit card on that. She'd never see a diamond.
Good to see you, buddy. Thanks, Chip.
Thanks, Chip. No, it's easy. Thank you. You guys did the work.
It's a pleasure to do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure.
Keep safe.
Mr. Administrator, what else?
Uh...
What do you got? Intermunicipal agreement with Rentham for water?
Yep. We have amendment to the intermunicipal agreement with Rentham. The long and, the short of it is, we are adding a house.
Two houses, eh?
I think there's already one on...
Oh, one was on already?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. 115 Park Street was already on there. Now, we're adding 26 Shear Street.
Okay.
That's really the only change.
What happened?
Um, I think, believe that's the new home that's being built on Shear Street. It's kind of right on the, actually, some of the property is on the Norfolk line, and some of it's on the Rentham line. We don't have the ability to get there, so, but Rentham can. So, Rentham's going to get there. We'll build them, and then we'll be billed by Rentham.
All right. Any discussion, gentlemen?
I move to accept the amendment to add 115 Park Street to the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Rentham for water services.
No, the Shear Street address. 26 Shear Street.
26 Shear Street, exactly. 115 added.
115 is the current. It's the Shear Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed no. The ayes have it.
How many do you need to signature?
We're just, because they have to, Rentham has to do something.
We have to do it with Ronson, they're also meeting tonight, and they may ask the TA to sign instead of them, so we may have a signature.
Okay.
Whatever you want.
Okay. Second agenda item, or the second action item, was request to approve the new contract drivers and labor rates. The rates are laid out for you. There's a director is asking for a 1.5% COLA increased, COLA increase. Just as a, kind of a side note, I know Mr. Bragdon's been working with Mr. McGee a lot on just reviewing all the insurance that we, policies that the contract laborers have, and making sure that they all have us as a named...
Co-insured or something?
Co-insured, yeah. And then also that their insurance policies don't exempt them, exempt snowplowing, because some, a lot of insurance policies do. So, we've actually caught a couple that, so, they've had to probably up their cost for insurance. But good news is, now we're protected better.
Is this a, like, is this a competitive increase?
Yeah. It's competitive to the other towns. I think we're still below, you know, a lot of the M towns, but we're able to attract enough drivers to keep us in business.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions?
No.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the contract drivers' contract on labor rates for the DPW for 2013, 2014.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, the ayes have it.
It feels like we've done this already three times, but...
Santa Parade? Yeah. Let's, let's approve it again.
Please vote to approve the Norfolk Lions Santa Club Santa Parade for Sunday, December 8th, 2013, at 3:30 PM.
I thought we did approve this.
Well, let's, we'll re-approve it. We approve so much of this parade.
I move to approve the Norfolk Lions Santa Parade for December 8th, 2013.
Second.
Oh, this would be signs.
This is just signs, actually. That's why.
These are signs? Oh, well, wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
So, we've already approved the signs, now we're approving the parade?
The action items were misleading. Sorry. So, is that what we're doing? Oh, we would like to place signs out. Okay.
This, this letter is about signs. This...
Now, at the bottom, it says, please approve the parade.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't. You gave us a different letter, perhaps.
Yeah. This letter dated October 24th, so as soon as this...
We have an October 24th letter about signs.
When you see the bar, it just says, please, you don't hesitate to contact.
But you always have to approve the parade, or they don't do it. I probably just assumed that...
And Jack approves the signs.
Yeah, and Jack approves the signs.
Jack approves the signs.
Well, I, all right, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the, whatever parade route it is for the Santa Parade, which has been the same thing for 40 years. And Chuck is all set with, he's, he's, he's in agreement with what they need for the details and whatnot.
I haven't spoken with him, but he approves anything that's the same every year.
Is there a second?
Second is.
Second, motion's been seconded. Any more debate on the Santa Parade? Seeing none, all those in favor of the Santa Parade, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the Santa Parade, speak now if you hold your peace.
The parade is outlined in the third paragraph there, if you're interested in the route. Muster it.
Hillcrest Village. Yeah, but it's not, it's not permission asking.
We'll skip on to the next one. Conservation endorsement for 17 Standish Road. I don't know if you remember this piece of property. Those of you that have been, this goes all the way back to 2002. And really, this is just not something that would normally come before us. Just going to lay it out in front of you, if you don't mind. So, this is Standish Road, and I'm sorry, this won't be on the TV very well, but it's actually not very interesting. This is the temporary cul-de-sac.
Oh, I remember this.
This is a piece of property that was bought at auction back in 2002. This was the, this is supposed to be the permanent cul-de-sac, but because there are so many, there's wetland issues down there, he's going to have to keep part of this cul-de-sac here.
Wait a minute.
So, this is, this is...
This is a new house being built.
Correct. The Conservation Commission has asked us if they can just shrink this cul-de-sac a little bit.
This is the paved cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
But it's the temporary, it's labeled the temporary turnaround, even though it's on his private property.
But the shrinking, the shrinking is to allow for that lot to be developed?
Correct. For this, this lot to be developed. And he's, the property owner is working with us because, you know, it's to our benefit to work with him, because the full turnaround is on his property. He owns out to here. So, we're going to shrink this to somewhere around here. It says, proposed edge of pavement, and this is going to go and make it like a hammerhead turn.
Is the fire chief okay?
Yeah. The fire chief, the police chief, and Mr. McGee from the DPW have all approved that. Conservation Commission wanted to just make sure that I had talked to the three department heads, and you didn't have a problem. So, part of that cul-de-sac is still going to remain on private property, but it'll be in a, it'll, he, we'll have to shrink it some so that he can get a septic system in where the, on his property, but where the old pavement is.
I'm unclear as to the action they want. This isn't, you know, releasing a conservation easement. This isn't creating a new easement. This is an endorsement. Is this like...
That was my term. They're looking to make sure that we don't have an issue with, I mean, I think, I think we can actually just take no action.
Yeah. This looks okay to us.
This looks okay to us, and we're not going to stop, we're not going to stop them from taking up pavement off of private property to create someone's septic system. I don't think, I think we would lose, you know, we would lose in a, if, if this went to court, because our cul-de-sac is on private property anyway, so I'm not...
Well, but we don't lose when roads are on private property. That's a fully accepted public way, right?
Not on his private property, it doesn't. Can't have a public way on, on top of private way.
It's all on property until you accept it as a public way. Like, when the subdivision was laid out, you know, everyone...
Yeah. But we haven't accepted the public way as far as the temporary turnaround.
Have we? Do you know what the vote on Standish says?
If we did, we would, we would then have that deed for that property, and we don't.
All right. I have no objection.
I mean, this doesn't appear to cause any problems or anything, from what I can see.
Makes things work better.
Well, the kids can't play as much. They're talking.
It's a very quiet turnaround. Ideally, it would be great if that just stayed the cul-de-sac that it is, but he bought that property from the town that we auctioned back in 2002. So, I think the expectation is, he should be able to, you know, agree, have fair use of his property.
So, well, then, they're looking for us, to Rob's point, they're looking for us to sort of bless the process, so we could do a motion to say that we are in agreement with the proposal. Would that be acceptable to the chair?
Sure. I'll take that. Motion's been made that we are in agreement with the proposal.
Second.
Made and seconded. Let's not have any more discussion on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, the ayes have it. Very good.
Well, action item is, I seem to have lost it out of my packet.
It's probably Mark.
I know. I have that, but I thought, I thought there was a letter from him.
Thank you, yeah, by the way.
Okay.
I love you.
Oh, I'm going to pull that card. We have a request to be, for a gentleman to be appointed to the Recreation Commission. We did receive a letter yesterday.
I had the fortune of attending the last Recreation Commission to discuss their vehicle purchase, which, upon further review and after discussion with them, I'm very comfortable with the process that they took and what they did. But that's new here and there. And I did actually, Todd was there and spoke into Todd. I actually know Todd from before. So, I think he's a very qualified and energetic person. He's got young kids who would be interested in the recreation facilities in town, so it could be a great choice.
I also know Todd quite well, and I think he'd be great.
Plus, he's willing to do it.
Yeah. Beyond that, no, it makes sense. He does, he does Lions hockey. He's been there for all the scheduled meetings. So, they got an interested candidate with young kids. It means he'll be there for a while, I think.
Yeah.
I move to appoint Todd Lindmark to the Recreation Board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, the ayes have it.
My understanding is, there are, there are two vacancies, so...
Yeah.
There is one that, one person who has, is doing some research, but... He can do it. Was he at Chris, right?
Yep, Chris.
So, please do it, Chris, if you're so interested. So, hopefully, he, I don't want to make that mistake of making a gender error again. I apologize to the artist over, who's displaying artistry over at the library for Robin. I referred to him as a female, and I apologize. Actually, gentlemen.
Just we got a fancy handout report now, too? Oh, in, in the report you did that?
Just an update on some things that I've been working on. Jim, I know you, I didn't talk to you today, but you, my understanding is, you, you may or may not have information about the affordable homes.
I do. I actually ran into Walter. Not literally. Pulte is going to take on the opportunity for finishing the homes. Walter was here getting the diagrams and the plans for the homes and delivering them to Pulte, and we are a go. He, I expect to hear from Mark tomorrow, but I think the issue is moving in the right direction, so...
Super.
Walter will be out of the picture.
So, those are the final two homes on the Gump's property. Jim and I met with the advisory board last Wednesday, reviewed the articles with them. The article, the town warrant has been posted on the website and posted on the public locations in town by the constable. Hard copies will be left at the senior center, library, and available at Town Hall. Anybody that would like one, email their hard copy delivered to them. I'd be happy to do that if they call or send us an email. September 11th Memorial, on last week, we held a ceremony. Bonnie Dietrich and Maria Tomaszewski, I guess, kind of led the, led the way on the 9/11 memorial that was originally on Town Hill and was restored, is now down on the first floor of the Town Hall. I think we found a great location for it. And of course, the new 9/11 statue is on Town Hill. So, I thank Bonnie and Maria and all the other folks who organized that and fundraised and donated time and money to put that together. Should also point out that Kim Garrity was kind enough to calligraphy? To calligraphy? Whatever verb version is.
I have no idea what you would call it.
She did a wonderful work that is hanging down by the memorial, thanking the people who donated money to the funds to put those memorials together. So, thank you to Kim. King Philip Water, this is at the middle school. As you have heard from me for a couple of weeks, probably, the, there was some discussion about the, some pressure concerns a couple of years, that go back a couple of years ago. Those have been rectified, and, but during that investigation of, of the water, we learned that some of the water lines at the, at the middle school weren't, aren't in place as they appear to show on the ASBILs. So, King Philip has gone, is going back to their engineers and project manager, and they'll have some discussions about that. Really, the last thing for, from the, it's, it's, it's a, well, one thing they need to verify is just that everything is, is up to snuff as far as the architects and engineers' calculations go. Our water department engineer, from an informal review, believes everything is fine, but that's, the calculations on the building load and et cetera are beyond the calculations that he did. What's left for them, the town's point of view is just to, there's a, one of the differences was, there's supposed to be two lines going into the building, one for fire suppression and one for domestic use. There are backflow devices in place that, that we believe are doing the job, but the code is that those need to be separated. So, we've asked King Philip to go back to their engineers and architects and contractor and find out why that wasn't done, and somehow that change should be brought up to code.
It should be on them, because that was the code then.
It should, yeah. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, this isn't, yeah. It's not a, not a code change. This is, this is a code issue from when the building was constructed. The Medicom and Regional Emergency Communications Center, sometimes called the MECC, sometimes called the REC, is, the board met today, which is the four town administrators. We've received an update from the Operations Committee, which is the, is mostly the chiefs, but they're, of course, working with consultants and with dispatchers, and sometimes with firefighters and police officers as well. They're working on finalizing the construction budget, which includes the past three years of grants, as compared to the architecture and engineers' contracts that are now in place, along with their, most of the equipment that they're going, that they will be going out to purchase will be on state bid information, so they can get all that pricing, and they're putting all that together. We'll identify any, we know there are going to be some shortfalls still, but, so we'll, we'll put that together with the FY15 911 grant, and hopefully fill any, any shortfalls or adjust the project as necessary. Been a lot of, there was a request from the professional firefighters in Massachusetts to get involved on the Operations Committee a little more formally. We've met with them a couple of times and certainly expressed our, we agree with them that we certainly want firefighters, police officers, and dispatchers all involved in putting together operations policies and making decisions on setup, et cetera. But we feel that, we feel, and is outlined in the intermunicipal agreement, that the chiefs should be making those policy decisions, and we welcome their input, and they seem to respect that, that decision we've made. Next meeting of the board, it's, which is a public body, is on November 19th at 9:00 AM, Rentham Town Hall. Anybody that's interested in seeing the progress of the REC is certainly welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Jack, is there a, a business plan in place for the whole strategy to roll this out?
Not yet. We're certainly following the lessons of, they call it the Shrek, the southern Massachusetts, I can't actually tell you what Shrek stands for.
Very popular movie.
The Hingham, yeah. I'm surprised they haven't been sued yet, to tell you the truth. But the Hingham-Norwell, I think it's Cohasset and Marshfield Regional Communication Center. Their, the strategy they followed was, the, the center is in Hingham, and they, what they did was, they moved Hingham onboard first, and then rolled the other three towns on month by month. So, we, we expect to be able to do that same thing, putting Rentham on first, and then probably either Plainville or Norfolk second, and then the other one, and then we'll move the big, the big town of Franklin over last. But there's, we're certainly, you know, there's, there was a lot of bumps with the Shrek, and they're still going through some hiccups. And so, we're reminded of that all the time, especially about BFMM, PFMM, PF, PFFM. It, and I'm not criticizing them. They're, they are frequently reminding us of, of the issues they've had at the Shreks, and, and we are not, we're not... of, of the issues they've had at the Shreks, and, and we are not, we're not cooker, cookie, wow, I'm tired, the cookie cutter-ing that and placing it here, we're, we're trying to learn from their lessons. We're actually gonna go down and meet with the town administrators and the executive director again, down there, and rehash some of the conversion issues they had, so that we don't repeat those mistakes, so.
But at some point, is, who's gonna have the responsibility of putting together that whole strategy?
When we hire, not, in the, not, in the too-long future, we will hire probably a consultant to be the, the first executive director, which will be the lead dispatcher, and that will probably be one of the local companies that have done either the Shrek or one of the other North Shore Regional Communication Center. They'll do that along with Maguire Group, which is our project manager. Maguire Group, I have been, you know, of all the project managers I've dealt with for the different projects, they're, they are far and above the, the best that I've seen, and I have confidence that between the, the consultant as the executive director and project manager, we'll, we'll have a good plan put together. Couple of the, you know, Chief Bushnell has consulting experience and is good at operational studies, but, and I give him a lot of credit, but I also would point to Chief McGar, the Fire Chief in Franklin, who does, who has a ton of experience and has done a lot of consulting with fire departments all over New England. He's very good at kinda studying a plan and making sure that it makes sense before we go into the, into operations, so I think we got some excellent people involved in the project. Julie Shefko, who's our town accountant, and I met with, actually telephoned with Matt Hunt today, who's a partner at Sullivan Rogers, our consulting firm, they, Matt just wanted to give us a heads up that they are merging with Clifton, Ross, and Allen, a national CPA firm. He used the term merger, I would use the term they're being acquired by, that's a 3,500 part, member, our employee firm, and Sullivan Rogers is, is a local firm who we've had great, great teammate with, but CRA is, is developing their, their government auditing work in Massachusetts, they have, they, they do it all over, over the country, but they do not have a presence in Massachusetts, so Sullivan Rogers will be their, their first endeavor in Massachusetts in this, in government work. They have, they do have a Braintree and, uh, sorry, Burlington and a Quincy office. We actually just renewed with Sullivan Rogers, so they're, they told us not to worry that our, that our fee structure that's in place for the next three years is, will be retained, so that's good news. Couple upcoming meetings, Freeman Kennedy School Building Committee, did I skip one? I think I skipped one. Oh, no.
No.
Bob and I, yeah, went to the King Philip meeting last night. Tomorrow night is the Freeman Kennedy School Building Committee. We're the, we're getting real close, we, we, I need to, we're gonna kinda have a review of the budget again tomorrow. I'll get that to you, everything that I've heard so far is that we're in better shape than we, than we, than we thought we were two months ago. The, the one challenge that we're struggling with the project manager and contractor right now is where Ingrid has kinda been leading the charge, but other committee members have been involved too, is just that they're, we're concerned that they're installing the playground system in weather that's too cold, so it's, I hope we don't end up with problems there, but we're certainly gonna keep an eye on that and file a claim if we have to.
Sorry, is it 'cause they wanna install it, or we want them to install? I know it is a tough time, so I assume they don't wanna put out, they wanna get done out of here.
They wanna install, we wanted them to install it two, three months ago.
Right.
And they've, they've been working on it, and so now that it's getting cold, we've told them, we don't want them to install, we want them to wait, or do whatever, you know, work they have to do to keep, you know, heat blankets or, you know, build a tented area with heat, you know, whatever silliness they have to do to, so they're gonna talk to us about that tomorrow, too. Their, their opinion is that they're okay.
Of course they will be, right.
And Ingrid and, and others who have a lot more experience with it than I do are, have expressed concern that they're not living up to the manufacturer's standards. The other issue that is kinda open with the school is, we're still fighting with the, one of the contractors about the, the requirement they had to screen all the loom. We've got a, you know, a loom pile of as big as Town Hall over at the DPW, and the requirement, as we read it in all the specs, is that they, that's all, so that's all surplus loom. The requirement, as we read it and we intended it to read, is that they had to screen all that before they surplused it over to our DPW.
They did not.
They did not, they just, they moved it. And I, you know, I'll say, we, we agreed to let them move it with the acknowledgement that they still had to screen it, because we needed them to move it so they could continue on with the building and finish the project, and in trying to work with them, we said, yeah, go ahead and move it, but don't, don't forget you gotta screen it, and now they're trying to get out of that, so.
Isn't it written down? I mean, is it simple as that? I don't know.
It's, I read it as black and white in the, in the specs, that, that any surplus loom will be screened. They, they're arguing that, that...
What did they say? I mean, I don't understand, yeah, how, how...
That's the argument.
Right, I'm dying to hear what, you know, check the...
They're arguing that it's, it's, I can't, I can't even say, I, I can't make their argument. They're saying that it doesn't have to be loomed, it doesn't, it doesn't matter that that, because it's off property now, it's not technically surplus loom, and...
Have we made the final payment to them yet?
No, no, we've, we've, we've held...
I was gonna say, I'll fix that, yeah.
Yeah, we've held retainage, we've had a whole lot of discussions about whether or not we wanna let them screen it in protest, and then go to arbitration, and then debate about it. Our concern about is if we go down that route, the arbitrator's gonna make us pay half of the...
Your contract's black and white, you said?
Yeah, and, but arbitrators don't necessarily read, I mean, black and white, so we're, we're gonna meet... We're gonna meet with the general contractor, who, who so far has agreed with his sub, but we'll see how that, we're hoping to convince him, 'cause he has been good to work with in the past, so. Bob McGee and I are meeting tomorrow with Walpole Bank to discuss the condition of the roadways in Shire Park, there's...
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
What about the gym floor?
It's, it's, they've been working on that, reducing the humidity in there, and it's, my understanding is it's, it's actually, you know, knock on wood, acceptable. Yeah, so it's, there's still some minor paint issues and, and, you know, the poly, condition of the poly, but that's hard to argue now, because we've been using it for a year or two. So the Rentham Schools, Ingrid has been working with, it was Jeff Marsen at the time, but talking to them about how they maintain their, they have a machine that just, they poly it themselves every year, so we're gonna work on that, but as far as the gaps and the, and the warping, we think that's actually settled down and it's gotten much more usable, so we're not the concern that it was six months ago.
The noise issue in the superintendent's office, with the equipment that was over our office, have they mitigated that?
To my knowledge, as the last School Building Committee meeting and the last time I talked to Ingrid, no, they have not, but they know that's on their list of things to do. And the other thing that we have, uh, they're gonna give us an update on tomorrow, I don't know if they're installed yet or not, is the noise mitigation on those outside units that are of concern to the neighbors. We had to do, you know...
They did one.
They did one?
Yeah.
They're doing three, I believe. But it affects both Boardman Street and then the neighborhood in the back.
Did they live up to the financial commitments they made at that meeting you and I were at?
Yeah, when we met in the superintendent's office, yeah.
They did, okay, good.
Last thing on the list of upcoming events is just the Veterans Day Ceremony at Freeman Kennedy School on the 7th, I think, I know I'm attending, I think Jim's attending, and as we talked about, Jim will take the chair, so that'll be great. I know Senator Ross is attending, so I think there's one other. So the last thing that I want to talk about, assuming you don't have any questions, is just cash, 'cause a couple things have changed since the last time I talked to you. Julie's been working, Julie Shefko has been working with, as she always does, with the Department of Revenue, and the, the good news is the prison mitigation money and the FEMA money came in. The bad news is the Department of Revenue won't let us appropriate that money, because it's FY-13 money and we're now in fiscal year 14, so they, they are requiring us to let it go through the free, free cash process, because it's, it's money that came in in FY-13.
They could back the free, free cash process, too, you know, since they're the ones that held it up, okay. Not Department of Revenue, but the...
Yeah, Department of Revenue doesn't, they act on their own.
That just means we can't spend it until the fall town meeting of next year.
It was in a sup, when was the sup passed?
Came in after...
After June 30th, 2013?
Yes, it was. You know, Julie and I have talked about...
So that makes it, wait a minute, if it was after June 30th, that makes it FY-14 money, but, so it was before June 30th?
No, is it, it came in, no, they're saying, it came in in fiscal year 2014, but it's, it's money that is identified in the FY-13 state budget for prison mitigation. Same with FEMA.
But they didn't appropriate it until 14?
No, I thought that prison mitigation money was out of a supplemental budget, it wasn't on the main budget. And was it a section one, or 1A, or 1B?
It wasn't a supplemental budget, my understanding of it was a supplemental budget to FY-13, even though it came in in July of 2014.
That's such crap.
We've, you know, Julie and I have talked about it, and, I, I mean this as a compliment to her and a dig to myself, is, you know, we've, we've done all kinds of crazy things in the past, like, well, it's never been prior year money, so this is kinda an unusual circumstance, so I wouldn't have got on that path.
It's a left pocket to the right pocket, it just, it's unfortunate, but we can make it work.
So do we have to wait for it to be certified?
We have to wait...
Yeah.
So does this imperil our entire certification for FY-13?
No, that $544,000 was not dependent on, on either of those sources.
But it means we got $300,000 of free cash going in the door next year.
Yeah, before anything else happens. Julie's gonna try and, she was talking, trying to reach out to the, our contacts with Department of Corrections to find out if they know anything about the prison mitigation money that we should be expecting to receive in December, just trying to give us an idea of this year's money. We're hoping to get that, obviously, on schedule.
Okay.
So that brings us to capital.
So that brings us to capital, I guess I, and I think I've, I've listed all the different money that we've talked about to some degree in, in prior meetings. I guess I'm kind of of the mind that I'd, other than the school, I'd, I'd say, let's, you know, the school has made the request for the boiler and the request for the fire alarm panel. The, there, there are, you know, there's the animal control vehicle that, that Public Safety certainly would like to have, there's two police cars that they would like to have, there's tasers that they would like to have. I don't think unless one of you guys have a strong feeling that those are things that we have to have in the fall, those are things that we could deal with in the spring. There's paint, you know, again, Bob, Bob has concerns about the paint on the buildings that, that we've approved, you know, that was originally approved as part of that capital last year. You know, we gotta, we, there is concern that the building will, another winter, obviously we're not gonna paint this fall anyway, so we'd probably do it in the, you know, we'd probably have that money appropriated in the spring. So other uses of funds, the public schools' operational request of $100,000, I don't, I don't think we're gonna, there's no avoiding that. The capital I, I talked about, conservation agent...
Jack, I'm sorry.
Yep.
On the, on the operational, the hundred thou, that was for, I think we're for increased kindergarten, right? Was it, no?
Yeah, okay.
Good, well...
Yep, sure.
I met with Ingrid on this a couple of weeks ago. It, it actually is the majority of it is kindergarten.
Full-time?
Yeah, it, it's, it's an interesting thing, they, the way they do their enrollment traditionally, and she's requesting a change to this, they just had an unanticipated influx of students that, because the registration goes so long, the registration actually goes beyond the date that they have to pur, to prepare their budget.
Right.
So they, they used averages and all of the logical things that we would use to compute what we anticipate our, you know, associated enrollment to be, and unfortunately it proved to be about 40 kids off.
But was that the going, but the question was raised, actually Dave Benton will raise it, is it, because the full-time kindergarten costs money, so if they had four extra kids, at $4,000 each a kid, that's $160,000 of unanticipated revenue at the same time. I guess I'm confused. Do you know what I mean? You pay for, you get free half-day kindergarten...
But that won't pay for the teacher.
And it's not appropriated.
And it isn't appropriated, correct.
So where does it pay for, what is that?
It, it becomes free cash, 'cause it's a surplus. If they have revenue that they don't expect.
It's not, they, I mean, they can get grants and things of that nature as we do during the course of the year, that we can add to whatever it is we're trying to do, but they're for specific purposes. Rob, Rob's right on, the money that they're getting here will turn out and float into next year's revenue sources for us for free cash. They, they just, they got a bulge of kids that they never expected, and I met with it for...
Does it turn to free cash for them or for the town here?
I'm sorry?
Is it, who's it turned, who's the free cash is it, that bulge?
It comes back to us.
Well, it, it, it can come back to us, I mean, they, they can...
So they could use that for the capital expense, again?
No, 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 it has to be appropriated.
Right, appropriated for that, okay.
At, at Springtown meeting.
Right.
Right, okay.
But their needs are very legitimate, you know, I think Ingrid's done a great job with the budget this year, and I think she's got a good understanding, and I think she's gonna recommend changes to the school committee on how they've traditionally done this to try and mitigate some of the growth considerations. Look at the growth we're having in town now. You know, I mean, we're, we're gonna have a little bubble now of kids in our elementary system. May be a large bubble. They very well be. So they need the money, and they've also, I think, done a great job in their capital. She's, she's revisited that, Jack, I think, talked a little bit about the, the longer-term plan they're putting in place for maintenance, but the fire alarm system, she's gonna spread over multiple years. They've come up with a fairly comprehensive plan to deal with that, that will mitigate any immediate large sum of money that, I think it was 45, 40 or 45 grand, so that'll be over multiple years, which will ease the burden on our capital requirements. So I, they're doing everything they can to, I think, to, to manage their resources as effectively as they can. They can't control the fact that they've got 40 or 45 more kids than they anticipated.
So that's actually gonna be in Article Two, no, Article One, issue, the operating funds will be in Article One issue.
Article One, yeah.
Is, will there be any Article Five stuff, Jack? Are you recommending nothing?
Well, there would be just the, the boiler and the fire panel for the, for the...
Capital.
HLJ school, which I think was 45 and five, somewhere around there.
It's, I think it's 40 and five, so it's 45 to 50 grand total.
Have you guys thought about the, you know, the, I know we talked about having the conservation agent those hours adjusted after the plan, or do you want me to put some money in the, in the transfer, you know, about $6,000 to, to cover that, or do you want me to...
Well, if we're gonna do it during the year, we might as well, I, that's just my thought, give you that flexibility.
I would agree, yes.
The only other thing in Article One for transfers that, I think Department Heads and I are working on are, is just the repairs to the Public Safety Building. As you know, we had an accident, one of the, one of the, one of the ambulances was out of control and hit it, struck in between the two bays, struck the brick face, so unfortunately we have a $5,000...
Deductible, probably, right?
Deductible.
But we're self-insured, no? Oh, no, that's business, okay.
So we have a $5,000 deductible. We're looking at, and we won't do this until I come back to you, but one thing that we, Cole, Bob and I talked about is, 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 because it's a non-structural pole, is, is replacing that, the two doors and making it one big door, and make it a whole lot easier for them to, to... That's right, yeah. So we're gonna look at, Bob's trying to go out and, he's getting some quotes, he's got the quote on the door, and the door is, is expensive, about $10,000, but we're looking at, you know, what other work would have to get done. We'll look at, we're gonna look at that, what that project would be compared to just replacing the pole and reinstalling the doors. Obviously, you know, the chiefs, chiefs, the, the struggle is whether or not we're gonna have a new building, I mean, you know...
We gotta have a new building at some point, you know, before the earth cools, 'cause the thing has fallen apart, and just as my own view, I hate to put a lot of money on that building. that building.
Yeah, I mean, we, so, so that number could go down if we, you know, if we were just basically gonna pay for the deductible, it'll go down to obviously 5,000 or even less if we can, um, but.
So we're gonna spend about $200,000 of our free cash in this meeting.
Um, I didn't list on here the transfer to the stabilization because there, there was discussion amongst the board and I didn't know which way to go, so. That's, in your $200,000 calculation, you might figure that number in.
No, the, the advisory board voted IP it, so.
Well, you can always amend it. Um, so we're gonna spend about $200,000 of the free cash, prison mitigation won't be available until the following year, so that's gonna leave us with about $340,000 of free cash.
Okay, so there's no other, I'm, I'm not recommending any other capital items unless there's things that you.
And you had Department of, came back with nothing else, you, you, I mean, must haves.
No, no, but must haves.
Nothing must haves, I mean, yeah, Chuck, Chuck reached out, Rob, he'd love to have, you know, he, he would like to have tasers sooner rather than later.
How many do we have now?
Not enough.
I know that, but how many?
No, I think 12? I think you need seven.
Eight, you don't have.
I think we have 12. And he also needs batteries. Um, I'll talk to him again about that, um, you know, he said he could live with five for now.
Five more, or five batteries?
Again, I'm, 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 I'm more of the mind, because of the, the money, the prison mitigation money not being available, I'm just, I was of the mind of just kinda saying no to everything unless it was critical, and the critical thing to me was the boiler at the school and the fire panel, so. I, I, I think the police department will, you know, all in fair for the police department, the police department will continue to operate.
Right, well, I mean, nice, because, I mean, how many officers, I mean, I, they don't shift, but how many officers are on duty in anyone's shift at the point in time?
Two, three, four.
So they have, how many tasers?
They shift us four.
Two, three, four, twelve.
Ideally, they don't share?
Well, if you have 19, they each have their own taser.
I get it, but you have to have it at home, what do you, and, again, just saying pragmatically, the earth, the earth's not gonna cool, but right now you only have.
Kids can get out of hand here.
I get that too, and that's why I give one to Mrs. Carrity, but beyond that, um, you know, no, you know what I mean, I mean, like, it's Jack's must-have, why don't I stay and throw in?
This is a, this is a discussion I should let, I should let Chuck speak to, but in my discussions when we talked about this, when we first bought the tasers was that, uh, the argument was that each officer would have a taser for a couple of reasons. One, because when you, when you go from one shift to the other, you know, you've got, you don't wanna have a taser that's, uh, you wanna fully charged taser, so you wanna go on, on duty, you don't wanna take a taser from somebody that's just coming off duty because it's not fully charged.
It's not fully charged.
Uh, you wanna.
Because it just gets worn down, 'cause it has, it has dry, it has, it has discharge due to non-use, I, obviously the biggest, you know, how much does it wear down in, in one shift?
Probably not a lot, but, but then again, then it goes to the next shift, then it goes to the next.
I get you, eventually, yep. So you rotate, because you have more than enough to rotate that out if there's only three officers on duty.
Yep, uh, four.
Well, you're becoming a hard guy on this.
Well, no, just 'cause I, I get it, but I eventually have them, but.
Well, all right, so, so let's lay out all.
This come from.
You've been working on him?
Let's, let's lay out all the different.
I haven't said a word yet. I don't want Chuck to taser me though, so I'm gonna be tasered soon as I leave here.
It's not that bad, don't worry.
Yeah, Rob did it, it was, it was fine, I did it, it was fine, you should chew it, I would recommend it. I could marry, you, no, you didn't do it.
I didn't get tased, I know you didn't get tased.
Yeah, so, so the, the real, the important thing is that it's, it's something that you want the, the officer to have responsibility and take care of, it's, it's anything, you know, if, if.
As opposed to.
Rob, Jim and I'll share something.
Right.
I may not take care of my taser as well if I know I'm gonna hand it off to Jim.
Especially the cruisers actually, the way they, they portion the cruisers out, they know whose cruiser it is, so you know who's being.
Who didn't take the donut things out, who didn't clean it, who didn't do whatever. No, I get it, I, I think there was.
He's gonna get tased.
Anything, food wrappers, no, food wrappers, guys, sorry.
I hope, I hope you get home.
You're on your own, man.
All I'm getting at is, I know you mean, there's definitely more responsible, but I think they're all responsible, ladies and gentlemen, there too, at least for the interim.
They are, but, but Rob brings up the car, yeah, I agree, I mean, you know, who's, who's gonna clean out the car?
The car, yeah, tasers less likely. I mean, have they ever used them yet, have they been used yet in service?
They've, uh.
No, they've been deployed.
They've been deployed, but not, not.
So again, we haven't discharged and we haven't drawn down the batteries, I mean, until we have money, I'd buy them.
The less I say, the better.
Right now.
They train them, they, they, they do train with them.
Apparently they pulled it out three times and the guy was like, no mas.
That's good, that's what we want.
And it was somebody who wanted to rock and roll.
That's the best case scenario.
Yeah, that's the best case scenario.
What else would you hope for?
Yeah.
You'd rather pull it out to the weapon.
You know, actually, the Newton Police Department does not have tasers.
Attleboro, was it Attleboro or North Attleboro?
Probably had some environmental problem. Discharge of bad gas or something.
Attleboro had two taser incidents.
Well, was it Attleboro or North Attleboro that?
It was North Attleboro.
They, they, they got a lot of flak because they batoned the guy, um, and a lot of people considered it, uh.
Excessive.
Excessive.
They taped it or something like that, right? It was called.
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the public safety officials will tell you they did it textbook, um, but it certainly looked bad.
It's just they looked bad, the batons looked bad.
Batons are horrible, I mean, they, they, you know, it puts the officer at risk and it puts the individual at, I'd much, I'd, I would much rather get tased than struck on the knee or the head with a, with a, with a baton.
So, you're due to get prison mitigation money again.
We are.
And is it gonna be around the 282 that we're supposed to get?
I don't have any, I, I believe so, I don't have any solid.
Well, let's make a wild guess, we get what we're supposed to get. So we could have, we'll have a half a million dollars available.
First payment on a public safety bill. Yeah, it's probably just in the plans though, 'cause see Foxville's plans for the time out.
Well, all I'm saying is.
Do plans?
We've always, we've always struggled to get the capital process going in a timely manner.
Yep.
We can fix that now, we have time. So, can we get the capital out of the committee active in, by January?
Yeah.
And get these requests in and manager, because we have a lot of needs and it, it really needs to have a, a good process, and we have the time now to do it in an orderly manner, if we can get everybody engaged here quickly. Is that agreeable?
Thank you. Just one other thought on the tasers for taser victim bugby.
No, no, not against them, you got that right, that's what I said.
No, just, the thought, when the officers are deployed on details or, or at the court, you know, that's more than the two, three or four officers that are on duty at the time, so.
So how many, you don't know the total number we have, though?
There's like 19 police officers, right?
No, I get the, no, police have like, yeah.
I believe we have 12.
12 tasers?
Yeah.
And a duty rotation is three?
Well, it's four.
Four, four.
So it's eight, there's eight tasers.
Like Friday nights.
Eight tasers floating around there, one to the courts, a couple, I get, I'm just saying, yeah, ideally everyone has one, because they will take better care, because when, you know, when they get, that's, when Rob turns in it, that, it's got no batteries, it's all scratched up, he's in trouble, versus saying, oh, that was Jack, when he took it out, he must've taken it out, playing around, I get it.
How many walkie-talkies they have?
Oh.
Everyone has their own, right?
More than at least one for every, yeah, everybody has their own, yeah.
Same thing. They don't share guns. Same thing.
I'd have them share the guns too. I'd have them share guns too.
Plus, plus.
They buy the gun, don't they buy their own guns anyways?
No, they have to go to Andy for the bullet before they can fire.
The reserve officers and the specials buy their own, but not the, not the full-time.
I'd have them share that too, but that's, again.
What happens if you have to call them all back?
They have a few extras in the, you know.
I mean, for all intents and purposes, it's a.
Call up the citizens and borrow their.
Second Amendment ships, second amendment, right to bear arms, I'm sure, I'm sure, we know for certain people, I'm sure have guns out there. It's a piece of equipment?
It's a piece of equipment like their guns, like their pepper spray, you know, so it does, there's a lot of sense in making it a one-for-one.
So then, then, then we go, we take that everyone's stuff, so everyone should have their own cruiser too, because then they really maintain it.
That's what the state police does.
Right?
And they tend, they take them home.
Yeah, and then they're ready to go on.
Buy those big SUVs.
That's not a bad idea.
They buy those big SUVs.
There's one over on Madison Road.
Madison, where's Madison?
There's one over Madison Road to rent them. That cruiser is in that driveway.
You want, uh, it's an F-150, that's what the request, hasn't gone through the process yet though.
That's an expensive. Probably on speedway, just in case he or she happens to be sitting there, right?
I've never seen it, not in there.
31G?
Yeah, I, I haven't looked at the specs, that was what, that was.
Oh, heavy, okay.
I think it's, I think it's got the cage area built in the back and, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
What are we talking about now?
Uh, the animal control.
I was just seeing explorers again, that was, you know.
God, here we go. Let it go.
I don't wanna comment, I'm not gonna comment.
Come on, come on. Did you get any contributions from Rec when you were down there, by the way, or they didn't give you any money or?
No, no, any town vehicles or anything.
They have an impromptu Roomba class or anything?
Zumba.
Zumba, I apologize.
Roomba is, I believe, a vacuum cleaner.
A one-year pass, did you get a one-year pass?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Sorry, hand.
Vacuuming my pants, I love that commercial. All right, come on, let's go here, guys.
All I got.
What do we got?
I'm ready for dinner.
All right, so this is the town meeting warrant, there will be a, the meeting is on the 12th, the moderator meeting. I won't be there, um, it is during the day and I have a job that I can't, I don't have any leave from yet, so.
I will be there.
Cause I'm new.
It's, you're not, you're not gonna miss much.
Well, yes.
Do you have, do you have anything you would like me to represent?
Yes, we want $500,000 of free cash put over to stabilization.
Do you have anything else that you want me to actually say?
Yeah, I'm fine.
What time, November 2?
9:00 AM, 9:30 AM. Is it 9:30 or 9?
9:00 AM.
Do you have anything you wanna speak on?
There's usually donuts and coffee sometimes.
Scott, do you have anything you wanna speak on?
No, I can come with you if you want, I have my company, but I think I'm, I'm scheduled.
Are we gonna post, do you wanna, do you wanna talk about transfers or capital other than half an hour before town meeting? Or maybe I can suggest I could send them all out to you, and then if you wanna call a special meeting to discuss them, that would be great.
I'm comfortable with a thin capital.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with it as well.
Fine with me.
I mean, I do think we should do police cars, but.
I know, you've been on, I, I like that.
Two police cars would be 90 grand?
We could do one, we could do one.
I'd like to do, I, to me, I would do that animal control vehicle before I do a police car.
I would too, given that what can go on there.
Glaring need. And it's cheaper.
It's not even this cheap, something could happen in an animal.
Certainly is a glaring need.
It could get hurt, either animal or Hillary or anyone, any animal control person, not that they don't need a new police cruiser either, but.
I'm agnostic.
I would support adding the animal control vehicle to that.
Second.
I can, I can go off of a.
Yeah, why don't.
Consensus?
Why not, can you get some specs together?
Yeah, Rob doesn't want an explorer, I get it, we don't want, you know, a town car, it happens to have one small cage in the back, a trunk, has a big trunk.
It's a Ferrari with a cat carrier welded on the back.
But it's fast, that way it gets around like it could do fast.
Zoom!
I'm backing.
You know, there are certain times that I'm really kinda glad to be over on this side of the table.
I'm gonna be in big trouble as it is, so.
This was him, he started it, really.
I'm gonna be an explorer.
I do think, I think that's a glaring need and I would support that in this rec, in.
I might get my first email ever, I haven't got one.
How do you two guys feel?
No, I do, I agree, no, I, I think it's been there for a long time and, you know.
Can they share it with Rec?
It's an accident waiting to happen.
Can we do a shared vehicle?
Maybe for the police department, you're gonna be in the back of that cage, Rob, you're gonna be the first one to test out that cage, and if you can get out of it, I'll be right behind you though, I'll be on the other side, you'll be the feral guy.
So that would be about 225 we would spend?
This is perfect. 225.
What a coincidence, huh?
You gotta keep your Excel spreadsheet up when Jim is talking, because we're gonna, these numbers have to be.
Yeah, they won't, they're gonna home tonight and think about that, they'll be like, what, what am I supposed to commit?
Well, one, so 32.
Well, you've got, you've got an additional, what is that, the fire department is about, what, nine, eight, nine?
Eight, nine.
The additional number.
Yeah.
I was doing, but, you know, you have a calculator, you're an iPhone guy, I know.
Nine, 45, 50, 95, 195, about 226.
What are you, what are you throwing in there?
This number here, that, to be, to be determined is about $9,000.
Okay.
And what is it, roughly, what's the miscellaneous, what is?
Miscellaneous.
So, wait a minute, so public schools.
Is it a fire taser?
45 for the public schools, 100.
Oh, you put in 36 for the fire calls, two?
Yeah.
Okay, why? Why do we need that?
Cause we agreed to that.
Oh, that's the.
It's the callback strategy.
36?
For the, for the calendar year, not a run rate 36, but for the calendar, for the fiscal year.
Okay.
We voted that, we actually.
I, I think you, you agreed to it, I'm not sure about a vote.
Yeah.
It's good, we're not to do it. We agreed to it.
You had the 31, 8, 90, you're, you're three, you're 226.
Related to that, and a little bit of a sales pitch, and I say that with tongue-in-cheek, Cole did email me the quarterly, yeah, quarterly ambulance revenue, and it's an all-time high.
Other way, it's.
Part of, part of he says that, part of the reason for that is that he's only had to give up one.
One call?
One call to a different, another department, because he's been prepared to cover it with the callback strategy.
It's revenue, is he, how's the collection, is he getting the money? Because remember, that used to be the side issue, because we can't build direct, right?
Yeah, the collection's going better.
Well, they changed it.
Yeah, they changed the, the policy.
Can't build direct now. We're getting the money, we're getting a check back from insurance companies direct now?
I believe so.
That's awesome. I didn't know if the governor, I thought that didn't 100%.
They changed it.
That's great.
And the, the DOR number is up, because they changed, they're not with UMass Medical anymore, they're with a new vendor, and they agreed to a higher rate than the abysmal below Medicare rate that they're paying before. The, uh, sorry, DOC number.
I'm like, okay.
Maybe, yeah, yeah, gas safe, another service, great.
That's a long trip.
Yeah, that's why we get some money.
So that will leave us. Okay, so.
Leave us?
Still do.
Well, then I was just.
He's leaving us in suspense.
Yeah, just, no, I was just looking at the, with the reserves and anticipating snow and ice and all that good stuff, and I, we'll be in good shape.
Yeah, I think we have better revenue, so.
Even if we have a bad winter, we should be okay. With a little luck.
We're in a much blacker position than we've ever been in going into a budget cycle than I can remember. I don't remember having $500,000 sitting around.
No, I don't, I agree with you, I just hate to hear that said, said out loud, because I know.
Yeah, something's gonna happen, or, yeah.
Nobody buys a new car.
We've just helped half of it.
Yeah, we've got, but we've got some, we've got some good stuff coming in too, it's, uh.
With prison mitigation money the following year.
Right.
But there's also stuff we have to do.
I'm a little concerned with, with, you know, and I, as I always am, I'm a little concerned with the projections for next year's budget, because, you know, the school's base is already up $100,000, so that's gonna be another impact in, may, King Philip, we know, we'll come back with a significant number.
They didn't mention anything, Jack, about their floor, you know, the problem that they have in the middle school, too, the floor being taken up, you know, that septic problem?
No, well, no.
50 to 160 grand next year.
What's that?
I would guess that the entry schools will be up at least 150 grand next year.
Above this number, or above the number we voted at the Springtown meeting?
Above this, above, above the new number.
No.
Yeah, okay, so that's 250 above last year.
Correct.
Because, you know, Paul's low.
Don't say that a lot, because.
Capital thing, because we've never approved them, but they're gonna need some money.
I'm meeting with Todd Ingrid on the 18th.
He's thinking three and a half range, which is a lot.
Get the whole chin.
Because they're 75% payroll.
Until the summer. That's what they say, you know, that's, could I go to those budget subcommittee meetings?
They're going, this, school is going, they will be starting negotiations at some point, because their contract, it's a contract year, so. I'm meeting with Ingrid on the 18th.
Are you giving them a guidepost, kind of?
They've asked me to, Ingrid certainly wants me to be involved in the process. I